Good evening and welcome to the Milford Select Board meeting of August 12, 2024 at 6:00 PM in Room 3 of Town Hall. Our first agenda item tonight is the signing of the warrant. May I please have a motion to accept the signing of the warrant?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to sign the warrant of July 29, 2024.
And I would make that unanimous. And our next under-agenda item A is the approval of the regular session meeting minutes for July 29, 2024.
Motion to approve the regular session minutes of July 29, 2024.
Okay, our next agenda item is public hearings. We do have a public hearing scheduled tonight. It's with CT Bar Incorporated doing business as Central Tavern. It's a license hearing. And this evening, we do have Town Council Representative Brian Murray with us. Attorney Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, you have correspondence that was sent out by the town administrator to the CT Bar Inc/ Central Tavern dated August 5, 2024, outlining a summarization of certain facts and placing the license holder on notice that this is a hearing that could result in the modification, suspension, or revocation of the license issued to the establishment. The facts underlying the notice arise out of a Milford police investigation by Detective Patrick Clausen initiated on July 30, 2024 pursuant to an assignment from the chief of police in term to conduct a check of proper compliance and code adherence. Reading from the report of Detective Clausen, on that particular date, he was able to make contact with Joan Clerico, health inspector with the town of Milford. And Ms. Clerico confirmed that her office was notified that the establishment, Central Tavern, was being sold, but that no documentation had been submitted to the town notifying them of any completed sale. Detective Clausen made it to the property, and he observed two different signs out front, one reading Barrows Bar and Kitchen, and a second reading Central Tavern. The Barrows Bar sign appeared to be new and much more prevalent than the old existing Central Tavern sign. Upon entering the establishment, Detective Clausen observed a new logo and verbiage of the Barrows Bar throughout the establishment, including signs on each table, a purchase of sale equipment receipt, large wall art in multiple locations, and no spot inside was there any indication of the name Central Tavern. Furthermore, Detective Clausen was met by an individual who introduced himself as the manager, Mr. Mateus Panero. However, it's significant to note, Mr. Chairman, that the all-alcohol common victual license issued by the town of Milford lists a Mr. Donizet de Silva as the manager. Regardless, Mr. Panero disclosed to Detective Clausen that the owners of the property, Mr. Bruno Orlandi and Mr. Donizet de Silva -- again, it's significant to note that those individuals are not owners of the establishment, rather, it is CT Bar Inc., DBA Central Tavern. But those individuals were unavailable. Mr. Panero stated that the pair planned to sell to a third party, a Mr. Philippe Drummond, but they have not executed a purchase-and-sale agreement as of yet. Detective Clausen further asked about the signs throughout the establishment. Mr. Panero stated that this will be the new name, but it is yet to be official. Detective Clausen was also presented with the active alcohol, all-alcohol common victual license issued by the town, again, to CT Bar Inc., DBA Central Tavern, with an expiration date of December 31, 2024. Further investigation by the town, particularly the Health Department, was an inspection of the establishment's webpage, and what it showed was nothing about Central Tavern, but advertisement, if you will, for this Barrows Bar and Kitchen, as well as a menu that is affiliated with Barrows Bar and Kitchen. Also, with the assistance of the town clerk's office, there was investigation into the DBA certificate because the license is issued to the corporation in a DBA name. The DBA certificate on record with the town of Milford is CT Bar Inc., DBA Central Sports Bar, which is not the name of the license holder under the license. This certificate was filed on January 16, 2024. Again, working with the Health Department, the permit to operate the food establishment was filled out by a person named Haleo Nazareth, again, indicating the owner to be a Donizetto de Silva, which I've already stated to you is inaccurate. And this food establishment application was issued to an establishment known as Central Sports Bar, which is what was indicated on the DBA certificate, but not accurate. The significance of both of these is tremendous, even though the name distinctions may seem slight. In essence, by having an inaccurate name with the Health Department, if there was any type of enforcement or action that needed to be taken, there'd be no entity to take it against. The DBA certificate could put third parties in jeopardy if they had any liability claims, dram shop acts, anything like that, against the establishment. And, Mr. Chairman, it's -- I think it's more than just negligence. So, conversation with the Select Board's office today indicated that the administrative assistant had conversation with these owners, indicating that these names were not accurate at the time of their renewal, and in fact, sent an email to Mr. Bruno Orlandi on Friday, December 22, 2023, indicating the link to use for the change of the DBA. So this email notification was sent to them prior to the January filing of the inaccurate DBA certificate with the town clerk's office, and obviously, prior to the application with the Health Department of the inaccurate name for the food permit, which, I don't know if I stated, that was just on July 9. So, that is, in essence, the information that you have before you, and I will turn it back to you. Our police chief is here, if you have any further questions of him, and then, of course, you have the license holders.
Thank you very much. Chief Dusino, would you have any comments you'd like to come forward and make, please?
Yeah, you know, Attorney Murray covered it, in essence. I just want to say that that reading of the narrative from Detective Clausen is, in fact, the facts of this case as far as the Police Department is concerned. And Attorney Murray also mentioned that, you know, this was something that they tried to mitigate, we tried to mitigate because we've gotten complaints, and through the town administrator's office, you know, tried to get in touch with them and find out, you know, has this paperwork been done? You know, this didn't just happen, you know, yesterday in this chain of events. So, again, I just want to testify to the fact that this is an accurate description as far as the Police Department is concerned, and the police report that was read by Attorney Murray.
Thank you very much, Chief. And with that, I'll turn it to Attorney Solomon.
Good evening. So, as you know, from my presence in the past, I do represent Donizet de Silva, who is the owner of Central Tavern. I have had the opportunity to review all of the documentation that was forwarded to him when he was served with the letter from the town, and I've had an opportunity to speak with him, as well as the second gentleman, who is identified in the report as potentially being the successor owner, Mr. Philippe Drummond, who is here today as well. So, I can tell you procedurally, as it pertains to the specific violation that's clearly articulated in the police report relative to the name change, that I have spoken with David Burton Ozzy, who was hired by the gentleman who's looking to buy it to do a transfer of license. I needed to understand what steps had been taken, what was going on, and where they were in the process. I was also aware that the buyer had hired a lawyer up in North Andover to start drafting paperwork. And I think the issue with the gentleman before you is that they started a process of investigating, what do we need to do? They had lawyers in place, Attorney Burton Ozzy to do the liquor license, the attorney in North Andover to do a purchase-and-sales agreement, and any other document that might be necessary to effectuate a sale of the business. The documents were drafted, documents have not been executed, the documents are not dated because they were being circulated for further discussion and revisions. When I spoke to Attorney Burton Ozzy this morning, my understanding is that he had met with Mr. Drummond, had explained to Mr. Drummond that if there is going to be an application to do a transfer of the liquor license, these are all of the documents that you need to get to me. I wasn't specifically clear on when that meeting happened, however, I was here in May. I did the liquor license training with Donizet de Silva's staff, I believe it was June 3. So at some point in time in the last two months, there had been a meeting to do this transfer. What Attorney Burton Ozzy represented to me is he didn't have the list of documents returned from Mr. Drummond to then go ahead and proceed to do that paperwork. And I think from my client's perspective, he's looking at this, and yes, the central sign is still up on the building, yes, the building is labeled with what the new business name is going to be. Unfortunately for these gentlemen, they stepped too far into the transition. They didn't allow the transition of the business to occur before then actually changing who is running this business. When I interviewed them, I explained to them that based upon the liquor license laws and who holds the liquor license, that the liquor can't be sold under these circumstances because we know that the liquor license name, the name of the business, is not what is appearing, as said in the report predominantly on the business. My client is well aware, as he does remain the current owner, so I do want to say, in terms of some of the information that's in the report, I am not questioning Detective Clausen's narrative. But there is a little bit of concerning information from my client's perspective as to what Mr. Mateus Panero had given in terms of information. So he was simply there that day as the on-duty manager. He was not representing himself as the manager of the establishment. And my client does remain the owner of that establishment, and the intent in the further negotiations of the purchase-and-sales agreement is not to remove my client from complete ownership interest. That's part of the further negotiations, that he, that the sale is going to include him to still be an owner, whatever percentage that may be, should the sale go through. In explaining all of this to my client and going through his legal obligations with a liquor license, I've explained to him the significant legal legalities of it. As Attorney Murray said, there could potentially be harmful effects to anybody who might be a claimant for a dram shop issue, given these issues, the irregularities and the paperwork submitted to the Board of Health. And what my client has stated to me is he understands the position that he's in, he understands that he could lose his liquor license today, and what he would ask the Board to do is to consider his offer, that he would like to shut down his business effective today until such time that there is a successful transfer, if there is one, because I know the process to transfer the license, it's not guaranteed. We don't know if the sale of this property is going to go through. We don't know that they're going to be able to execute a purchase-and-sales agreement and have a successful sale. But he would like to offer to shut down his establishment until he can either finalize that with Mr. Drummond, and if he's not able to finalize that with Mr. Drummond, he is going to have to look at other options to get rid of that asset.
Thank you. Paul, I'll open it to you first.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You know, here we are again, through a time, I believe, in less than a year.
That is correct.
Like I say, there's a lot of tremendous responsibility in having a liquor license, you know, especially from the town of Milford. Like I said, there's been certain things happening here. There's concern or question whether Mr. Drummond owns the business or not, but I did my research myself, and this was on like what Mr. Murray said, but I also have it translated for me, too. And it says, hello, my name is Philippe Drummond, and my name is Mr. Clausen, I can't pronounce your first name. We are here to invite you into our restaurant, Barrows Bar and Restaurant. We are located at 31 Central Street, Milford, Mass. Come and visit us. To me, that indicates ownership. It was already made. It's just, to me, and like I say, if we would have to approve the new owner, if that was to be, and I can tell you, what we try to have, what we really try to do is make sure that the person has good moral character as well. That's very important to us, especially when it comes to serving alcohol with the responsibilities they have. In looking over the report that I got from the police and investigative notes, in 2022, Attorney General Healy penalized Mr. Philippe Drummond in the amount of $540,000 in restitution and penalties for failing to pay prevailing wages and falsifying payroll records in his construction company. That's not good moral character. I, myself, speaking as a Select Board member, would not approve Mr. Drummond from even considering him to have a liquor license in this town. And like I say, I think there's a lot of happening behind the scenes here, you know, and I says, I think a sale was made, I think, or at least promised to be made, and A, B, C, C didn't know, Select Board didn't know, and like I said, it's a tremendous, to me, it's a tremendous violation of the liquor license, and that's for something that he should have known. I, myself, didn't think he was qualified to have the liquor license from the beginning, since this is his third time here.
I understand that. I think, you know, the only thing that I can say is in terms of--
Just in fact, one thing, again, if there's any sale, potential sale, admittedly, it's not approved by me. I can tell you right now, that is not good moral character.
Understood. And I understand that, you know, obviously, they have a business relationship, obviously, they know one another. You know, it's unfortunate that, you know, Mr. Drummond did put things out there that obviously put my client and his position in a very precarious predicament. I can say that, you know, my client, if he were to dispose of this asset in the absence of being able to do so on a transfer of sale, if he is able to find a successful buyer without the liquor license, could have a significant financial impact on him. I know that that's not the Board's concern, I understand that it's not. But I think that his willingness to say, at this point, I would rather shut myself down and try to put somebody in there that could potentially make that place prosper.
And then the track record isn't so good either, for me to consider that.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Town Council Murray, I'm going to ask some questions, and if I get a little bit out of line, please start me.
We'll rope you in.
Thank you. So, and I'll ask these questions through Attorney Solomon. I have to sit here this evening, after having looked through all this documentation, and I'm going to go all the way back to the first night that you were here before us, and a very serious offense. And we took action with the understanding that we were going to work through it. And so I said to myself, if I was a business owner, and I was fortunate enough to get out of, or escape, whatever words you want to use, that situation, I would surely think that moving forward, anything you did, including your paperwork, would be spot on. And as Town Council Murray has shown this evening, there are numerous violations just in the paperwork. And as a board member, I have to sit here and say, how can that be? The first offense was very serious, and we worked together to get through that, to give them the opportunity, because as a board, we want to promote business, okay? And so, just the paperwork. But then I have to say to you that, on the other side of that, the sign, the change of signage, going into the restaurant, if you read the detective's report, little flyers on the tables, the names are already changed. And I have to be very honest with you, and please forgive me, I take that as screw you, we're going to do what we want. Well, that's not how it works, not how it works in this town, okay? We do want to help people, we do want to promote business, but we all have to abide by the rules, by the laws. And to Selectman Mazakelli's point, this is the third time, the third time, and so now, for you to come here this evening and propose that you're going to shut your business down, like you're going to be the good guys now, you're going to shut your business down to show us good faith? What good faith have you showed me? I, I can only speak for myself, twice, twice, have tried to work with you, and now you come back to me and you put a proposal together that you want me to think that you're going to be the good guys and you're going to shut your business down. How do I know that you're going to tell me you're going to shut your business down and you don't do something else, because your record isn't very good? Okay? So I can't do that. In good faith, I, I can only speak for myself, sit in this chair, because the residents of this community put me here to protect them, to protect their interests in this community. And operating a business like this is not protecting the citizens of this community. And so, again, I go back to a very simple question, why and how? I would honestly have to ask, out of you three gentlemen, how could you put us in that, how could you put us in this predicament? And then come to us and say, we're going to be the good guys, we want to shut our business down? Really? It's unacceptable, in my opinion, and I'm only one member out of three, but I got to tell you how I really feel, because the first time you came before us, okay, it really felt like, you know what, let's see if we can't work through this. This is the third time. How many times are you going to do it to me? You want me just to let it keep going? No, I can't. I have a responsibility. And again, I don't mean to be repetitive, but I can only speak for myself. I have a responsibility to the people in this community, and I'm going to withhold that. And I just hope, I just hope that you gentlemen truly, truly understand, if you could take the time to read the detective's report, that the chief has said and certified that it's accurate, if you could just take the time to read it, and just imagine if you were sitting in this seat where I am tonight, and you wouldn't feel differently than you do sitting in those seats, I'd be astounded, astounded. And so, I go back, if the attorney, if you'd like to answer the question, why, all I want to know is why and how? Thank you. Any further? Attorney Murray?
So, Mr. Chairman, you obviously have a few things in play here, and having heard the presentation, to be quite frank, the underlying violation that we have, it's even more disturbing to me, and I'm sure it is to you as well, to hear that the parties were represented by counsel, capable counsel who are familiar with the transfer process under Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 138, Section 12, and regardless, the license holder totally ignored that. That, to me, is very disturbing and very troubling, beyond the fact that these folks had just recently purchased the facility and the license within the last couple of years or so. They're familiar with the process under the general laws. So, that advice and counsel has clearly been ignored by the license holder. But the other significant item that we have here is what we talked about in terms of the filing with the town clerk and the filing with the Health Department, which was in direct contravention of what your office told them needed to be done, and a month later, they violated it. That's extremely disturbing. It can't, to me, be chalked up as a mistake, an oversight. To me, it looks of deliberateness. So, these are some very serious violations. There are a number of violations of the town's general rules in terms of governing premises licensed for the sale of alcoholic beverages under Section 1.05. You've got, we talked about violation of any provision of the relevant general laws of the Commonwealth, check that one off, that's there. Fraud, misrepresentation, false material statement, check that one off, you've got that here. Failure to operate the premises covered by the license, check. Failure or refusal of the licensee to furnish and disclose information required. So you have a number of violations by this license holder under the town's own set of regulations. You know, clearly, I think at least, at the very least, a long-term suspension would be in order, but it's certainly not unreasonable to consider revocation as well.
I agree.
Okay. Would the, your clients like to say anything, or?
This gentleman is, that's Donizet Silva, he is my client, that's Philippe Drummond, he was represented by other councils. Is there anything you want to say to the Board? Anything you have you want to say?
Okay. I just want to give him the opportunity. Okay. With that, Mr. Mazakelli?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, based on the series of the violations that Attorney Murray mentioned, that I mentioned, and that you mentioned as well. I make a motion that we revoke the alcohol license of Central CT Bar Incorporated doing business as Central Tavern at 31 Central Street, Milford, Mass.
And I revoke to make that unanimous. Hey, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
You had all this here, you even had pictures, obviously, here.
Take care.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, next agenda item is scheduled appointments. We do have one scheduled appointment this evening. It is a transfer of common victual wine and malt license. The application is from a place who gave me Monacara Tequila. It's approval of a revised document. We do have a department head review form. The address of the establishment is 206 East Main--
Can I just, one second? Just, I just want to reference that was a public hearing prior--
Oh, I'm sorry.
--the hearing attendance, and I'm going to ask Chris George if anyone was on--
There was someone online.
Yeah, that's what we figured--
My apologies.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thank you, Rick. Location of the business is 206 East Main Street, Unit 1. We do, as I said, we do have a department head review form, and the building commissioner, allowable use, town planner, okay, no change of actual use, treasurer collector, no liens, no outstanding taxes, fire chief, no objections, police chief has approved it, and the Board of Health has no objections, and their last inspection was July 25, 2024. And again, that is the transfer of a common victual license for Monacara Tequila LLC. With that, I'll make, accept the motion?
One more thing I would love to add--
Yes.
--this license, it's technically not a transfer at this time, the license was approved, we were not back in March 23. However, there were documents that were not completely submitted, and the ADCC requested revised documents, minor things, lighter items.
Okay.
So basically, the motion would be to complete the transfer of the common victual wine and malt license--
Okay.
--to approve these revised documents. It's a little bit confusing.
Okay.
That's kind of what--
All right. Mr. Chair, yeah, thank you, Ricky. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we complete the transfer of common victual wine and malt beverage license review and approval of revised documents by the Select Board. beverage license review and approval of revised documents by the select board. Transfer of the license was done on 3/27/2023. A B C C is requesting this revised documentation. So I approve the transfer.
And I would make that unanimous. Thank you very much. And our next agenda item is Town Administrator's report. Mr. Valani?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three items tonight. I know I reported last evening that we were working on the installation of the flooring at the police station. Very quick project is now completed. I can go up and look at it myself, and everyone seemed very pleased with the project and the completion of the project. I just want to thank the facilities director, Carlos Betton, who will receive this project. We are going to begin tomorrow the police station lock open project. It will involve the demolition of the existing lockers and installation of new state-of-the-art lockers for all police personnel. Again, facilities director Carlos Betton will receive this project. The final item is, I received a phone call from a representative from Amazon. He advised me to inform employees at its Milford facility on 1 National Street that they will be winding down their car operations in two phases over the next eight months. The first phase will conclude by the end of August of this year, the second by the end of March 25. As they make the transition, you should be all current employees and then often the opportunity. The same with the Amazon, as the bulk of the previous package file process in Milford is now shifting to a new facility, which they have in Uxbridge, that's expected to launch this August. So he did say that I could bring that to the board's attention and the public's attention.
Excuse me, Rick. On the second phase, does that mean that they'll still be in Milford, or they'll be out of Milford?
They're winding down.
They're winding down, is, yeah, so that was...
I don't have it to finish the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I just put it towards...
Okay. Paul, any comment?
No, no, thank you, Rick, for that information.
Neither do I. Thank you very much, Rick. Okay, our next agenda item is old business, and we have, again, the town administrator, the appointment of a part-time senior center program coordinator.
Yes, on this one, Mr. Chairman, I did appoint a Jill Lonelybridge at last meeting. One little minor technicality, I'll take fault for this, she used to replace the grade three step two. I inadvertently said grade three step one, as that will. So I would ask that the motion be to replace the grade three step two under our subject of personnel board.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the, that we approve the pay rate for this individual, that grade three, step two, under Article 2, with a starting hourly wage of $28.58, contingent upon personnel board approval.
And I would make that unanimous. Okay. Next item under old business is town council, the host community agreement with M1 Enterprises LLC.
Again, this was an approved agreement at the last meeting, and we, there are just a few typographical errors. So Brian, town council went through it, notified the entity representatives of M1 Enterprises LLC, and they have been corrected. So just for clarity, we'd ask the board just to write motion to approve the...
Excuse me, Rick, the errors that were made, did it have anything, anything to do with...
Nothing, nothing.
It's just like a spelling error or something?
Spelling, verbiage, etc.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion that we approve this host agreement for M1, based on the correction of the typographical errors.
And I would make that unanimous. Okay. Next agenda item is new business. Under new business, again, we refer back to Mr. Valani as the town administrator, appointment of an alternative assistant, part-time plumbing and wiring inspector.
Yes, we did post for these two positions, nine through the application, and we received the review by the H R director, Ian Building and Heating, Jonathan Erickson. We are recommending Jeff Holby as the alternate assistant wiring inspector. He's been electrical inspector for the town of Medwood for nine years. He has 41 years of electrical licensing experience. We're also recommending Jeff Frederick as the alternate assisting plumbing inspector. He's been in the plumbing and heating business for over 30 years, yet in coastal and gas inspection fields. If you approve the request, the recommendation, then you place the grade six step two under Article 2, starting power and heating distribution close 69. Again, contingent upon personnel board approval. And yet, these are on-call positions, so if it should be, people we have care for, they step in. So there's no additional cost.
Right, right.
But it just, vacations, timing, things like that.
And that's very important, Mr. Chair, too, because, like I said, when people are getting various work done electrically or plumbing wise and whatnot, be it a water heater or rewiring of the house, or fixing an electrical problem and whatnot, before the individual or the homeowner uses that, he needed inspected to make sure that the work was done to code and done properly. So it's very important that we have that type of service going to the homeowners on a basis that requires speed and help and whatnot. And I commend John, too, for his, that's good department head guidance, I believe, as well, to help not only his own office out, but to help the residents of Milford out. So I make a motion that we approve his recommendation.
And before I vote on it, if I may, and Rick, I don't mean to put you in a spot, maybe this can't be answered, but you had made a comment that these people would only be used when the other inspectors aren't available?
Yeah, I believe John is the backup electrical.
Okay.
My assistant, Glenn, on the backup.
That's okay, just a question is...
Well, no, backup to them, this is your vacant.
Okay. But is it, is it a, is there a concern that sometimes, or a lot of the times, maybe they're not available? Is that...
No, no, no.
Okay, so it's just, we're just putting a place holder in...
Mr. Justin Kings.
Okay, absolutely. And I would make that unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And next item under new business is, again, we go back to town administrator for special town meeting date.
Yes, that time again, I'm asking the board to set town meeting, special town meeting to solve on Monday, October 21st, 2024. Obviously, the grand extra day, we could go to Wednesday, October 23rd. So I would like the motion to set the town meeting date of October 21st and to overlook bond.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the date of Monday, October 21st, 2024, for the special town meeting, which would convene at 7:00 PM at the Milford Town Hall.
And I would make that unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Anybody in the audience for invitation to speak?
No online.
And nobody online. Okay. Next agenda item is correspondence. Mr. Mazza Kelly, do you have any cards?
No, Mr. Chairman, I do not this time.
I do have one. I did get notified from a residence on Prairie Street, about an incident, again, with Enterprise parking on the end of Prairie Street and Route 16. I reached out to the chief, and he is going to send somebody down tomorrow to kind of talk to Enterprise and share things up with them. So that's all that I had, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. And we do not have any executive session this evening, Mr. Valani?
We do not.
And with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
And I would make that unanimous. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much for tuning in, and I hope everybody's having a very enjoyable summer.
Thank you.
Again, good evening, and thank you.